Mayor Foley, Vice Mayor Alwater, Councilmember Carroll, Councilmember Altieri, Councilmember Dean. Let the record show all members present.
Mr. Mayor, I respectfully request that Item 8C Ordinance 577 prohibition on marijuana dispensaries be pulled for first reading. We need to do an updated advertisement to comply with any new statutory requirement.
All right, so for non-content reasons, we will hold the ordinance to be based on the February agenda?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Are there any other requests before we vote on the change? If there are other requests, if you're working to include the agenda?
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I agree, we have a presentation, actually proclamation, of four people on this, and we're in this proclamation. I mentioned to our guests that this is amazing, here goes vice president, and in that time, and it works in that time, we've seen some great movement on this issue, including spending legislation, not just for us, but also for others, and may which to...
You may wish to address when you're up there. And then I saw a recent article where other countries are actually following the lead on this to combat the scourge of human trafficking. And it's a complicated issue. It's wound up in everything from illegal migration and immigration to gangs and all sorts of scary stuff. And we thank you for your steadfastness and your courage in doing that. Would you like to come up and say a few words before council issues the proclamation?
So, good work, Mayor Foley and the team. Councilmembers, thank you for helping our community to become aware of the fastest-growing crime in the world today, which is child sex trafficking. We are here today because we are in a crisis for our children, and we believe addressing the crisis of human trafficking through awareness and action alongside our government leaders is one of the keys to bringing an end to this travesty. Since the pandemic, child sex trafficking has become the fastest-growing crime in the world. America is now the biggest buyer of sex, and Florida is number three in hotline calls. The buying and selling of humans is a multi-billion-dollar global market. Sex trafficking is in every state and in every community. This horror is happening right here in Indian River County. Over the last year and a half, there have been fourteen related arrests for trafficking and child exploitation. All of these include child pornography. Social media has opened the door for predators and traffickers to bait and groom a child so that they will come to them willingly. Sexting and sextortion is now the fastest-growing gateway to child trafficking, and according to Homeland Security, recruiters are being, are within our schools, and many are the same age as our students, and being used to start sexting rings. In the Treasure Coast, four teachers have been arrested for sexting with students. Florida Faith Alliance has created powerful trafficking prevention videos called "Don't Take the Bait." These are for middle and high school students. The Indian River County School Board voted unanimously this past year to bring these videos into all Indian River County schools. We are now training district employees and students. In 2025, we will be affecting over seventy thousand children and seven thousand employees in several counties. Florida Faith Alliance founder and COO Lynn Barletta worked with Florida House Representative Tovey Overdorff to help get HB3 passed, and as of January 1st, Pornhub, the most viewed porn website in the world, has pulled out of Florida. We have joined Ashley Moody in seeking to see a hundred percent of all county, city, town, business, and social organizations take the free one-hour awareness training, equipping our citizens to recognize and report, and bring an end to this violence against our children. This year, we will be bringing the Day of Defense to Indian River County. This will include demonstrations and training in self-defense, in situational defense, and an online defense, empowering every age group to learn how to protect themselves against predators. We believe that the anti-trafficking campaign that has been launched in our county can multiply to other counties throughout Florida. Together, we can do this. We can cross party lines, racial lines, and cultural lines. Now is the time. Proverbs 31:8 says, "Speak up for those who cannot speak for themselves; ensure justice for those being crushed." Together, we can unite to send a loud and a clear message, uh-uh, not on our watch. Thank you for your ongoing support.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the good work that you do. We have, we now have two elected, I'm sorry, we have an Attorney General from Florida who's very familiar with this issue, is now the Attorney General, going to be the Attorney General of the United States, and we now have Senator Moody, who, you know, was very, very well-versed in this issue. So hopefully, we'll get some legislation, strengthen legislation on the federal level as well.
We're thankful for Governor DeSantis, because he has moved on, you know, and he's been at loss, you know, and we are very fortunate in this state.
Yes, we are. And it, and for anybody who thinks it doesn't happen here, it happens in your backyard. And it's, it's...
Yeah, I think it's like examples that...
That's okay. I think your website has, you know, you have samples of the videos and, you know, this even...
You know, whereas presentations, where we mentioned, you know, all the vibrations and all of the arrests.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much. All right, anything council wants to add on this issue before we issue the proclamation? All right, so we are going to issue a proclamation of the Town of Indian River Shores recognizing January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Indian River County, Florida. There are a number of whereas clauses. You covered all the points, so I'm going to go right to the meat of it, which is the proclamation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Town Council of the Town of Indian River Shores that the month of January is recognized as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Florida Faith Alliance also asks council members and residents to support the Florida Faith Alliance Day of Defense in Indian River County in 2025 to equip parents, grandparents, and concerned citizens to eliminate human trafficking and help empower families to recognize the signs, turn in tips, and save lives. And I'm going to add, it won't happen on our watch here, okay? Given my hand and seal this 23rd day of January, the Town Council of the Town of Indian River Shores. So, thank you very much, and thank you for your work. Why don't we stay standing in front, we can get the whole council, hopefully. Great, thank you. Thank you. All right, Item 4, are there any comments from the public regarding agenda items? Just to clarify, this is on items on the agenda, any comments? If you have other observations or things you want to bring to council's attention, that happens at the end of the meeting. All right, there being none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Item 5, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We do not have any, anything, so we can just go all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are, approved unanimously on the consent agenda. Item 6 is the mayor's report. First of all, we've, we've taken steps to fire the weather committee on the council. Just wanted to point out that, don't, don't recall us having weather quite like this before. Well, kidding aside, the, where it does have relevance is in our beach replenishment. There was an event yesterday that we were planning to attend, many of us were planning to attend, the presentation by the county on the beach replenishment program. That event, due to the poor weather, was canceled unfortunately, but there will be a press release detailing the steps done for dune restoration and sand replenishment. I'll defer to our Beach and Shores Committee member, which I believe is Vice Mayor Alwater, if he wants to add some more items on that. All right, are there any council member items? There being none?
Boy, you gotta be quick. Mr. Mayor, you, you folks have a sheet in front of you. I reached out to Congressman Aradopoulos about potentially having to come down and address the Town Council. Maybe that's not the right way to go, but the only way that he can meet with us as a group, it has to be a public meeting due to the Sunshine Law. So if, if council wants to go a different way, I'll just reach out to him individually and, and set up a meeting, so whatever preference people have.
I, you know, are there any particular issues, or is it just a...
No, I, I want to make aware of beach issues, flood insurance, which are both federal items. Also, another item that impacts the residents of our town a lot is the Corporate Transparency Act, which requires that people who are on HOAs have to file a report each year, giving information to the federal government. Anytime that board gets changed, it's incredibly burdensome, and it impacts our town, and I could probably think of a couple other things offhand. So I'm happy to address those issues with him one-on-one, if I can schedule it.
I'm, firstly, I'm, I'm fine with you addressing the issues one-on-one, and then you can report back. Probably be more expedient than trying to arrange a meeting with the congressman's schedule. I think they're going to have a fairly busy spring in Washington, DC. Does anybody else have any thoughts on that? So, all right, Vice Mayor, your, your efforts are appreciated, and we look forward to any report back. Okay, Item 8A, discussion with possible or probable action, Ordinance Number 576, smoking and marijuana dispensary regulations. This was a topic from the last, last meeting. We have a no, now a new proposed ordinance. Mr. Town Attorney, do you want to give a little bit of the background on it, and what you, what you drafted after last, last council meeting?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, what you have in front of you is proposed Ordinance Number 576. This particular ordinance is solely focused on the regulation and prohibition of marijuana, smoking marijuana in public places within the town. Pursuant to the discussion that occurred last time, I have reduced and removed any reference to any other substance, paraphernalia, anything, and solely limited it to smoking of marijuana on public areas, our beaches, our sidewalks, and it dovetails with that direction from council. This would be the first reading. It also did not include or create any other penalty, like a civil citation program. It simply could be enforced as a code enforcement mechanism, so that could go to the special magistrate. And please keep in mind, this is a belt-and-suspenders approach. It is still illegal, not only at the federal level, but also at the state level, to smoke marijuana anywhere publicly in Florida. So there is a criminal aspect, which our law enforcement would still have the ability, just like they do with any other enforcement procedure, to take whatever route would be appropriate. So that's why it's very limited. You will see it's now only limited to the two pages and those subsections. So at this time, I just ask that I could read the title so that you can decide how you want to proceed. This is Ordinance Number 576, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Indian River Shores, Florida, amending Chapter 91, beaches, Chapter 94, streets and sidewalks, Chapter 95, parks, to prohibit smoking marijuana and for other purposes, providing for severability, providing for scrivener's errors, the repeal of all conflicting ordinances, codification, and an effective date. This is the first reading. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, now we can, now we can commence a discussion. As with last time, let's start with the lawyers on the right. Councilmember Dean.
I pretty much cleaned it up for us, and I don't, I don't have a problem with it. I'm assuming then it becomes a violation of an ordinance as opposed to a criminal offense, although it still is a second degree felony by the state statute was asked about. We didn't need to throw in any kind of a criminal offense. It's simply an ordinance, and I have no problem with it.
I have no problem with it.
I'm the recovering lawyer on the, on the bench here, but I will, I will add my, my thoughts. I think you did an excellent job amalgamating the council's thoughts, and I, I agree with the violation of the ordinance only, since we still have a criminal penalty under state statute for recreational use. And I particularly note that the ability to enhance the penalty, should it become legalized under state statute or a further constitutional amendment, always remains, but we have intact the, the ordinance itself that outlawed smoking within the town grounds, so it would be, it would be fine for preemption because you've, you've basically severed the penalty provision from the, from the others. So I'm all in favor of it. I think it's a great job. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Alwater.
I agree with the other folks' comments up here in the days.
Councilmember Carroll.
I agree as well, and congratulate Pete for listening to Town Council and summarizing so succinctly the consensus from the last meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you, Pete. All right, before we vote, the, in a pursuit of statute passed in the 2024 legislation, we have a business impact estimate. It's okay to do that after first reading, and we vote on the first reading?
Yes, sir. The requirement under the state statute is that it has to be posted contemporaneous with the second reading for the enactment. So we're working through that, and we think we have a good analogous model from a separate jurisdiction that has a similar enactment, so we're working with. We want to be on all four squares there. Of course, we don't expect any impact, but that's when it will be proceeded.
Right, okay, but with respect to the dispensary issue, I suspect that will be a more, a more detailed analysis required.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that would be, and that's why it's a separate ordinance.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, okay. Are we ready to vote?
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask that if there's any, well, actually, it got covered, but if there was anybody that wanted to speak on this item, since it's a public hearing.
Yeah, sure. Is there any public comment on this? All right, there being none, again, are we ready to vote? Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call vote.
Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Alwater?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Councilmember Altieri?
Aye.
Councilmember Dean?
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Madam Clerk, for reminding me that a motion was necessary. Okay, we have, next up is a request to change the March Town Council meeting date. That is, it's fine with me. Is there a motion to approve that date, or is it present a problem for anyone to change that date to Wednesday, March 26th, for Councilman Alwater?
No problem.
No problem?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you all for doing that.
No worries. You're kind of an important person to have at the meeting, so all of us are important, so it's great to accommodate those, those changes when we can. All right, we are going to do this, the staff updates, when are we doing the, the shade meeting? Do we decide to do that after, or...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, when I come to my report, I'll give the invocation for it.
All right, you bet. Okay, staff updates, building official report and statistics. I know Mr. Helv is not here today.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of expediency in light of this shade meeting, I would just be happy to take any questions after the meeting back to our staff, excuse me, building official or otherwise, who have already provided the reports. If there's any questions, issues, problems, or concerns with the reports, just please let me know, and we'll be happy to run that down, though we do have Chief Stone to come up very briefly for a comment and announcement.
All right, thank you very much. I trust there's no objection to that. Code enforcement, same, same issue?
Yes, same, same, same across the board, with the exception of Chief Stone.
Public works, same, and I know Heather's out, so for the Town Treasurer, she's attending to some family emergencies, so I don't have any, anything in particular, particularly on the budget report and revision, so does anybody from council have anything on finance for Mr. Harper to bring back to Town Treasurer? No? Okay. Public safety? Chief Stone, welcome.
Thank you for letting me briefly address the council this morning. I'm here to briefly mention the retirement of Chief Mark, Deputy Chief Mark Shaw, which will be effective the first week of February. Mark began his career in public sa, with the public safety in April of 2004, following his work with Indian River Emergency Services, the City of Vero, and North Palm Beach Public Safety Department. So it's safe to say, when Mark came to work for the town, you already had a seasoned person that was, that was walking in. I first met Mark in 2007, when I relocated in Indian River County, and he was always the go-to guy for the shores. Anytime an issue popped up regarding fire and EMS response, emergency management, those types of things, Mark was always my, my primary contact over here. I found him very easy to work with, and he's always, we were always trying to find mutual common ground to better address issues that were hitting the citizens of both the county, the towns, and the City of Vero Fire and EMS. And it's because of the work that I did with Mark that we have the, the Automatic Aid Agreement now, that provides additional coverage to the town, and we provide some additional coverage to the, to the rest of the barrier island. I would like to say that Mark made my transition to the shores easy. He held the historical knowledge of the town and the department, and could always explain the backstory when I'd walk into his office with that very puzzled Dalmatian look and go, "Why are we, why do we do this? I've never seen this before." And he always had the backstory as to how we actually got to that point. Like so many people that work in the public safety arena for any period of time, Mark has a very wicked and sharp sense of humor, and even to the point that on rare occasion, he'd take an old grizzled public safety guy like me, just have me kind of raise an eyebrow, turn around, and kind of walk out the door. Mark's beneficent in the community, and his safety has served for over twenty years, and I'd like to thank him for that, for his presence and his faithfulness, not only to the town and the department, to myself, but to myself and to the members of the department. I'm sure that his retirement will be short-lived, and he will go, continue to work in the, and provide services in the law enforcement, fire, and EMS arena. The, I did caution Mark a couple of times that because retirement from the, from, from the public safety community can be difficult for some people, especially if you've got long experience in, in that arena. I can tell you from personal experience that I failed miserably at it twice, and have come, come back to work. But I did, did offer him some, some advice to take the ti, take some time, enjoy, heal up a little bit, regardless of how good your job is and how great things are, when you get away from it for a little while, you'll realize that, yeah, I need, I need a little bit of time away to heal up some. I wish him joy and happiness, and the change to reflect his, reflect on his legacy in the department, and thank him for a job well done. If you would, please join us on February 4th at 11:30 at the Community Center to wish Mark well and send him off on his next adventure. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mark, I will note that everybody up here is technically retired as well, and you see how that worked for us, right? So, you know, we, we've had a private discussion, and I bumped into Mark in the parking lot at Publix, and we had an even, an even better discussion there, I think, but I know you're looking forward to spending time with your family, and words cannot express the appreciation I feel personally for what you've done for the town. You've, you've always made, made an extra-special effort to do things that are within your core competency, which was always excellent, but then you introduced other things that really created a, a great community benefit, and I'm, I'm thinking about our Canine, Canine citizens, you know? The, the event that you put on every year for the Halo Shelter was something that everybody in the town greatly enjoyed, and was one of the few things that, you know, really had a, a community-wide impact, so thank you for that. I also look back to probably, it's good to say that we don't have serious fires, but one of the more serious ones recently was at the CVS, and you were right on the scene, taking charge of that situation, and did, you know, an absolutely outstanding job to contain what could have been a much more serious fire and a terrible tragedy, and protect the lives, safety, and property of the people of the town, which is, of course, your sworn duty. We're going to miss you. You had the ability to take this island hamlet, and you, you knew everybody in town. As my friends here remind me, you were one of the high school guys, so if you went to Vero Beach High School, you, you pretty much knew everybody you needed to know, so we thank you for integrating us in that regard as well. Don't be a stranger. I mean, I'll, I'll see you. I'm sure many of us will see you at, at your party, but don't be a stranger, and you'll always have my ear. If you, if you think there's something we should, we should be thinking about or could do differently, you know, please do so. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the rest of council. I know you've worked with Vice Mayor Alwater and some others of us up here on issues of importance, so thank you so much, and anybody else who wishes to say something, please feel free.
Mark, you've done a great job for the town, and particularly, I want to thank you for working with me on a number of issues with FDOT, your, your ability to approach them, and some of your contacts, and bringing in information that was, that helped things move forward. Mark and I were just on a call about potentially getting a crosswalk at the south end of town just a, a day or two ago, so, you know, right up to the end, he's been helping me on these issues. So do well on the retirement, echo the mayor's comments. You, you take a breath, but then after a while, you're sitting around in the house, and your wife is saying, "You need to get out and do something." So, so, but the best of luck, and I'll see you at your retirement luncheon.
Mark, I agree with and, and stand by everything that has been said by the mayor and vice mayor. I would simply add that, in my opinion, you have been a cornerstone of the culture of the Indian River Shores Public Safety Department. You exhibited fantastic esprit de corps, and in stark contrast to the chief, I passed retirement with an A+, and I wish you the same.
Mark, thanks so much for all you've done for the town. It's, it's been a pleasure to come to know you, and I hope we get to see you more in the future as well. Good luck in the future. Thanks.
Just want to wish you well in your retirement, and thank you so much for your service to the town.
All right, so it's unanimous, stay, stay retired. Thanks again, Mark. We'll see you soon. And thank you, Chief, for your kind words. Anything else for public safety? Any questions for the chief, or are we ready to move on to the town attorney? All right, Mr. Sweeney? All right, so layman's turn. After, after we adjourn the regular Town Council meeting, everybody else leave, and then we stay. Okay, gotcha, all right. Anything else from the town attorney? Town manager? Mr. Harper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Just briefly, we continue to work on the, the cart transition for solid waste. Lucy's taken probably close to 1,000 calls and contacts in that regard. Again, we're going to be concluding the gathering of the cart preference information for the town on Janu, at the end of January, and then sometime in April, we haven't set the date yet, Waste Management will be delivering carts to the town based on the information, the requests that we've received to date. Anyone that doesn't get that information to us by the end of the month will need to wait with the rest of the county for the transition and the cart exchanges, which will be later in the summer, in August. The only other thing I want to note, we've had some contact with a couple of different entities regarding the anchor out front. I've got a lot of actually good information from some folks at the Mel Fisher Museum just about care and maintenance, and we're looking at stabilizing it, getting a better base, and just getting it set and fixed so that it, it'll be harder to knock down next time. That's all I have.
Hopefully, there is no next time, but I, I appreciate what you're saying. Anything for the town manager? All right, I know Councilman Alwater had, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Alwater had a facilities issue that will, will be brought to your attention, so. Item 13, council committee reports. I'll start with Councilman Dean.
The legal cities is just cranking up for this year, and they're looking for their, trying to pinpoint what their main objectives are. One of the things that they're, they're interested in is the new proposed legislation that will address the fact that electric vehicles are not paying any kind of road tax, like a gas, so it's, it's important with a lot of the smaller communities and the larger too, so I'll keep you informed. That's the only thing we've really discussed at all. We've got a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you very much, and I know we all get the, the emails on this, but there are various, you know, legislative action groups that are put together from a number of different organizations that will start cranking up as well, so.
There are, and they, they'll be more defined after our next, next meeting, so, well, I will say too, though, that I observed fellow councilman here at the Vero Beach Utilities Commission, he, he had made some very good points on, and I'm sure he'll go into it, so, I'd like to compliment him on that.
Yeah, likewise, so. So, that was your first day at school at the?
It was my first day at school, so the Utilities Commission met in, in the beginning of January. Each of the committee members was there. There was no representative of, from the Essential Water Services Group at all. It was a very, very short meeting. I think the meeting probably would have lasted five minutes, but for the fact that the only piece of business that was brought to the committee was at staff's request, a request to reduce the number of meetings from once a month to quarterly. I responded to that. It was, it was, it was interesting because that came in the wake of the ma, our mayor's letter to the, to the mayor of Vero Beach, really raising concerns about the fact that the prior Utilities Commission's meetings had not been very well attended at all. Many of them had been canceled. Rarely could they accomplish a quorum. That letter did not get a response, as far as I know, from the city of Vero Beach. So, the point I made was that I thought it was somewhat ironic that their first, staff's first response to our inquiry was not to respond favorably, but rather to reduce the number of meetings from 12 to 4. So, I opposed that, suggested that a middle ground would be that they meet every other month, and that was accepted. But for that, that was the only piece of business that was brought to the attention of the committee, of the committee.
Well, I, I find it interesting that there continues to be no updates on the cost of that plant. Now, when, when I was on that commission last year, they were talking about having some updates in January, they just keep moving it back and back and back, so.
Yeah, and whether or not that committee could ever be a useful tool is questionable, but it certainly will never be efficacious if the representatives of the Essential Water Services don't come to the meeting. If it's a meeting that's attended just by the, the committee members, it's not going to move the ball in any direction whatsoever.
Right, I agree.
So, getting, I think the first order of business for me would be to try to get that type of attendance at six meetings that we're going to have on an annual basis.
Thank you. For, before I, before I get to my, my committee report, which is non, because I had to get my, my alternate to show due to a schedule conflict, I also read with interest and thought you did an excellent job highlighting the point. I, I agree that, as we sit here today, the question of whether or not the Utility Commission ever, ever does have a useful purpose is a question of serious doubt, but I will point out that when the town of Indian River Shores entered into the franchise agreement with the city of Vero Beach, participation on the Utilities Commission was sold as a major point in the contract, and a deep part of the consideration for the contract, because that's the only input, since we cannot vote for councilpeople in that jurisdiction, that our citizens have into utilities matters everything from rate paying to new projects to capital investment in infrastructure. I will note that we've had excellent people on there, Councilman Alwater before, Councilman McCord, and I don't think it's a coincidence that when very difficult questions were raised, thoughtful questions were raised, much more thoughtful than, you know, we're getting, we're getting tired of you people asking questions, should we now reduce the meetings so we don't only have to put up with this inconvenience four times a year? All of a sudden, the jurisdiction of that, of that Utilities Commission was reduced to the point where, well, we're not going to talk about rate, rate paying anymore. I believe it was, we're only going to talk about water quality issues. So, in, in my mind, it's yet another example of the benefit of the bargain that we entered into with the city of Vero Beach being snatched out from the foundation of the franchise agreement. Now, let's not get nervous, you know, we've had enough legal actions over the years, but I've asked the town attorney, based upon recent actions, and in particular, the attempt to try to reduce the number of meetings to four, and the, and the restriction on the jurisdiction of the Utilities Commission, to give us, you know, some kind of an opinion on the impact of, where, where does that really leave us with this agreement? You know, are we operating without a franchise agreement at this point? Because we, we no longer have to match rates with the county, you know, we, we lost that case in court, okay? We can, we can all disagree with what the courts did, but that's the fact. And then our, our only source of input as non-taxpayers who can't vote for people in that jurisdiction, which is the Utilities Commission, has now been neutered, and I was, I was going to think of a more harsh word, but decorum presents how I really feel about the issue, so the best thing I can come up with is neutered. So, is there anything left in that? The, the only, the only other thing in the agreement of any substance, really, is what are quality issues which are really superseded by, you know, state regulations? So, I trust there's consensus that, you know, without breaking the bank, or town attorney will, will render an opinion on that and see, see what's left. Now, if there's no franchise agreement, that doesn't mean, as far as I know, that they can stop providing us water, they still have to provide us water. They're just going to do whatever they're going to do anyway, and frankly, with the contract in place, they're already doing that. But at least we have an option, if there's no franchise agreement in place, that, you know, we won't, we won't hear back, you can't do that because you guys have, have an agreement with us. If there's no contract, there's no contract. It's not, it's not unilateral. So, anyway, that's my, my take on it. Thank you, Councilman Altieri, and thank you, Councilman Alwater, for your past work on that. As I said, I was unable to make my committee, so I'll pass over to Vice, Vice Mayor Alwater.
We didn't have a Beach Insurers meeting this month. I was reviewing the Pension Board, Beach, next Tuesday, Public Safety Pension Board. Happy to report that the actuarial evaluation report shows that as of the end of September, the fund was 109% funded, meaning that there's a dollar and nine cents for every $1 of future obligations. That is incredible funding, and if anything, that's probably gone up because of the way the market has reacted since that point. That is probably one of the highest funded ratios in the state afar for public safety. Also, the retiree medical account for the public safety employees and for the town employees is 160% funded. Based on my experience in municipal bond market, I think that might be quite possibly the highest funded ratio in the country. Again, that means there's a dollar 60 for every dollar of future benefits as put together by the actuaries. Most municipalities in this country do pay-as-you-go, meaning that when they're estimating what the retiree medical benefits are going to be for the coming year, they do an appropriation instead of putting money aside. We, we have done that for a, a long time, and, you know, that shows council's commitment to making sure that, you know, our employees who work hard, that the money is, is set aside. You can't say that in a lot of places, including many states in this country, notably New York, California, and Illinois, so just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Carroll?
Yes. I attended the January 8th meeting of the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments. The agenda was fairly perfunctory, introductions, chairman's comments, election of officers, nothing of particular note on that part of the agenda. What was noteworthy, however, was a special presentation that was made toward the end of the meeting honoring a gentleman named Joel Tyson. Tyson was first elected to the Felsmere City Council in 1998, when he was 66. In the 2024 election, having served every year since 1998, at the age of 92, he was defeated for his reelection bid. Tyson made a huge contribution during his time on council to the city of Felsmere. I'll give you just one data point. In 1998, when he first went on council, Felsmere was five square miles, and today, Felsmere is 60 square miles. I don't know if there's anyone on this council who has aspirations to serve until they're 92 or not, but if you do, I would suggest that you contact Mr. Tyson to see what the secret is. And then, on the 21st, I attended the Economic Development Council meeting. There was a very noteworthy development which took place at that meeting, that is, the naming of a national economic development consulting firm to aid Indian River County in charting its growth going forward. The name of the firm is Theory and Practice. We had a, an outstanding presentation by the members of that firm who will be working directly with the county, and I think it's a good step on the part of the county to engage with this consulting firm, and wish them well. Concludes my reports.
Thank you very much. I just want to point out, Mark, that Joel Tyson retired when he was 66, and he was mayor until he was 92, so just further food for thought, okay? All right. Mayor Tyson became, you know, a good acquaintance, and I'm glad to see that they honored him. Thank you for attending the meeting on, on my behalf. All right, so we are now at the point where we're going to make a call to the audience. Is there anything on the audience's mind that they would like to bring to council's attention? Yes, sir. As you approach, just state your name, your address, and then you can go on with your comments, so.
Hi, thanks for listening. I just wanted to make a really short observation. I, like everybody else, moved here, in my case, 20 years ago to kind of escape urban sprawl and enjoy our, our beautiful environment. I've kind of noticed over the last two years that as you drive along A1A, there are now 46 street signs, which is a lot of sprawl, 90 if you include the ones on the other side of the road. I don't really feel that this reflects, you know, the environment which we're trying to create for ourselves, and I'm no expert in road safety, but there's so many signs that you just kind of ignore them all night. And I, I rather hope that perhaps whatever relevant committee there is here could have another look at just the number of road signs that we're actually creating, and also hopefully, maybe in Indian River Shores, we can do more to reflect in our roads, the environment which we have, the sense of the river, the sense of, of the sea, because now it's just becoming like any other town, in my experience, and indeed, those of my neighbors where, where I live at Camelia Court, just across the road at number 161.
All right, thank, thank you for your comments on, on the road signs. We'll, we'll have a look at that. I mean, I've noticed the prevalence of them as well. We don't have complete control over that a lot of times, that's a state road, and, but we'll, we'll have a look at it and see, see what we can do.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, at, at this point, we are going to adjourn this meeting, and then I guess we lock the doors, right? And figuratively, not literally, but we have a, what's called a shade meeting pursuant to statute. So, thank you, everyone, for coming, and we will see you next month. Remember, the March date has changed, so we will get a notice out on that effect as well. Thank you.